Bow your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. To begin, if you would, please rise with me for a moment of silence and I pledge a plea.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Lawson?
I'm here.
Muran?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File? Here. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Your Honor, I would ask to have a couple items removed from the consent agenda, please. Um, now I gotta look for them again. Item twenty-six and item twenty-one.
And request to remove items number twenty-one and number twenty-six from the consent agenda. No discussion on that. Ask for your vote.
You're voting on the agenda as amended.
Yes.
That's a form, that's a motion to amend the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay. Motion and second to amend the consent agenda, removing items number twenty-one and number twenty-six. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
All councilmen present voting in the affirmative. Councilman Clausen abstaining, motion carries.
Okay. And would ask for a motion to approve the full agenda as amended.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
No discussion on that, please vote.
All councilmembers present voting in affirmative. Councilman Clausen abstaining, motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number twenty-one. Look for a motion to consider approval of change orders number one and number two with Dixon Construction Company for the Norfolk Avenue paving bridge improvements project resulting in net increases of seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars, fifty-one cents, and sixty-five thousand dollars respectively.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of this item.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Steve, maybe you can comment upfront on this, on the reasons behind change orders number one, number two.
Do you want me to approach the podium, Mr. Mayor?
I think you're fine.
Just fine. Change order number one is an increase of seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars and fifty-one cents for a variety of work items that were added to the project. Work change directive number one, which is the change of some water services from one inch and one and a half inch to two inch. Work directive two, removed existing wood retaining wall along Trail. Additional work items included some repairing some sanitary force main that was underneath Norfolk Avenue, remove some old concrete foundations that were in that area. That particular project happened across and we did run into the original bridge structure that was buried in that area. Additional work for banning duct bank, some temporary pavement as a function of pushing the permanent pavement marking into the spring of 2018. Some wire changes dealing with grounding on our street lighting. And then a ten thousand, about eleven thousand dollar deduct for piling adjustments that were made in the project. That is change order number one. Are there any questions on change order one?
I guess the only thing that I was seeing on change order one that kind of caught me off guard a little bit because apparently we were able to negotiate down the cost of the, call it unit price of the wire on it. So, I mean, same quantities, but it went down for a lesser amount there. But we did have to change the grounding size on some of it to number six.
Correct.
And so that came about because...
That was a functioning of our inspection, city inspector on that. There were some issues with code versus, national electric code versus what we would prefer to see as city on that. We preferred to see the heavier ground and go a little bit above what national code requires.
Okay, yeah, so it wasn't a matter of errors or omissions, it was just what we wanted to see as okay. And I didn't mean it worked out okay, it was relatively small increase, so.
Anything else? Change order number two then is the change order to move the completion date from thirty days past substantial completion into the spring of 2018 so that we could complete the permanent erosion control and the rest of the landscaping in the spring versus in the winter. We had some consultation with our landscape provider on that and just felt that that was going to be in the best interest of the project as well as finishing the permanent erosion control. The larger portion of this is the sixty-five thousand dollar incentive payment. The contract was started on April third, the road closure was April third. There was incentive in there, anything less than two-hundred-and-forty days of road closure paid a twenty-five-hundred dollar incentive. The project was opened on November third, so that would two-hundred-and-fourteen days, which left twenty-six days for incentive payment. The substantial completion date for the project was November eighteenth, and so we hit substantial completion about fifteen days ahead of schedule. So the substantial completion portion of the project ends. That was a twenty-five-hundred dollar liquidated damage if they missed the substantial completion date, but they did hit that, they beat that. So there's no substantial completion damages charged to them. The only thing we have is the incentive of twenty-five-hundred dollars a day times the twenty-six days. Question on that?
Yeah, that was basically my question and why I pulled it on off because I wasn't quite understanding how road closure date should have gone past the substantial completion date. I don't, you know, I would look at it as, you know, fairly that it should be at least fifteen days of bonus pay on it because that'd be from the third to the eighteenth, but this is taking it out.
Right, and so they are independent. The liquidated damages in that two-hundred-and-forty days floats and is an independent calculation from substantial completion. We did not tie those two together in the contract.
Okay. That's what just seemed strange to me that, that the, in essence, the liquidated damages of twenty-five-hundred were offsetting the eleven additional days of road closure times. So it's like twenty-six-hundred compared to twenty-five-hundred for eleven days.
So the, and the reason we did that was, the road closure is about shrinking the amount of time the road is closed and impacting the businesses and residents in that area. And so we want to control that. We want to give the contractor incentive to put more resources on there and shorten that amount of time that that closure occurs. The liquidated damages in this project is designed to make sure that we're controlling our risk of impacting those businesses into the holiday season. And so that date is set there as a hard date in the contract, November eighteen, to encourage completion on or prior to that.
I just got one more question, Steve. So the two-hundred-and-forty days starts on April third, so it's actual closure, not actual start of construction?
Correct.
Am I thinking right?
Correct. It's the date he closes the road.
Any further questions?
I would say, you know, I think from a business's perspective out there, they would assume we're paying out a hundred-and-fifty thousand. They would have just assumed we maximized that incentive and the contractor would have got done sixty days early. And we certainly structured ourselves accordingly in case that did happen so that we would be able to make that payment. But in this case, we did beat, we did beat the two-forty by twenty-six days and that was to our benefit and to the business's benefit out there.
Oh, yeah, and I'm not, yeah, that's a definite, it was well worth the twenty-six-hundred dollars for the fifteen days for the businesses that way. And ultimately for us in the end also, it was just, it just seemed a little strange that it was popping past the substantial completion date, so.
If no further questions or discussions on that, I would ask for your vote.
All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Clausen abstaining, motion carries.
It moves us to item number twenty-six. I would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number five with houseman construction for the library expansion and renovation project resulting in a net increase of thirty-one thousand, seventy-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Steve or Jessica, Jessica's here. Would you give us some background on this change order?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This change order, like the ones we've brought before, incorporates a bunch of smaller changes altogether into this change order. So you can see there's ten items on this, anywhere from a zero dollar net change all the way up to an eleven thousand, eight hundred dollar change depending on what the item is. So we have addition of, item one is mechanical grills at the slope ceiling, that was adding in some temperature grills so that the wiring above the ceiling didn't freeze when it got cold, in addition to adding some data cable in our young adult area. Number two is our general, adding some time to the contract, which might be one that some people might want to talk about, but that was accounting for the time that the library closed in November for the library staff to move the items and get the furniture in and get the building open for the public. While we did that, we obviously couldn't have a whole lot of construction happening on the renovation side of the library while we were moving and kind of occupying both spaces. So that allowed for an extension of the contract for twenty-one days. Number three is making sure that we get our sidewalk all the way around the block per city code and getting all of the rating and everything done correctly. Number four is just a minor change on some of our gas meter regulators from, I think, ounce to ounces was the specification there. Number five, added conduit for our paging speakers. Number six was our, the book stack ends that go in, they had not planned for all of the specifications, we needed to put our catalog computers so people can find books in there. So that allows for that change so that not all the book stacks are just flat, some of them will hold little computers on them. Number seven is, we needed our book drop at the back of the library where people are going to be able to drive up and drop their books off. There's doors that close that room off and they need to be up to fire code and we need the doors to hold open and so we can't put just regular hold opens on them. Architect did not understand what we were wanting to do with that space. So this, we have to have, the doors have to be connected to like magnetic door open so if the fire alarm went off, the doors would automatically close. So that wiring had to be added in after the fact. Number eight was just some changes in the lighting that we had to adapt as we put things in and saw how it looked. There was a few minor changes that had to be made in length of light strips and things. The revisions to the fireplace louvers, the subcontractor who did that swapped out one louver for another and didn't charge us any difference on that. And then number ten was adding some return air grills in our storage room so that the temperature would stay, you know, regulated in those storage closets. Are there any questions that I can add?
It wasn't, the reason I pulled it off was just because, I mean, it's a fairly substantial dollar amount that way. And it's, I mean, it's good, we're still staying underneath the, change order one had the value engineering items that came into play there.
Right.
And that, and we're still staying within that. I hope we don't creep anymore on that that way. The only other thing that I would ask in the end, because we've had change order one, two, three, and four, and the contract date on that, on those were always March, March twenty-third of the seventeenth, and this one's changed around to April, changed the contract date.
The contract date, we gave notice to proceed on April eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. So their contract has three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, so it should have ended April eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Then this number two for that adding the three weeks of general conditions, that adds twenty-one days, so now substantial completion is May ninth, twenty eighteen. So that, March twenty-third was when the contract was originally set to be signed and we didn't act, we did sign the contract, but we didn't issue notice to proceed until April eighteenth. So they just never changed it on those other change orders.
Okay, that's, I was catching that and I was going, well, Kate, I, that's, I just don't, I've never seen that before where that's changed around that way, so.
Well, and this conversation about that three weeks extension has gone on for a long time, so.
Right. Which, there is no liquidated damages or anything on this, I don't believe, and I don't believe there's any penalty on it. It's just, okay, everybody's getting antsy to see the final product and so it'll be coming, so.
And we are about seventy-five percent done with the project and we've used about thirty-six percent of our contingency fund. So, you know, we are using that contingency fund when we need it, but we're well beyond a point, you know, we've got some comfort level left with what's left.
Well, that's why I sent you an email and you responded about some grant stuff and that. And I was looking through what Randy provided as far as our sales tax money that's coming on in and what has come on in. And it looks quite comfortable to, to an unprofessional eye, that way anyway, it looks comfortable. So even if we just stay at or near the remainders, because that goes off, the collection goes off as of the end of March.
That's correct.
And so that takes two more months before we see the reports on that, so it's comforting to see that, that it actually worked out a little better than we anticipated, so.
We're on track.
We're on track.
Any other questions for Jessica? Okay, thank you. Okay, no further discussion. Counsel, I'd ask for your vote.
All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Clausen abstaining, motion carries.
Okay, that moves us into the public hearings and related action portion of the agenda. Item number twenty-eight, I would open this public hearing at the request of Deborah Earl Litch to consider zoning change from C-three service commercial district to R-three multiple family residential district on property addressed as one hundred West Park Avenue. And to open the hearing, Val, would you give us an introduction on this topic, please?
Yes, thank you. This property is on the northwest of First Street and Park, and it is currently zone C-three and it has been for quite some time. I think we looked at old zoning maps, it's been this since the eighties, I want to say. It does look like a house and it's been used as a house, so it's a non-conforming residential use that can continue to operate as a house as long as somebody does not discontinue that use for more than twelve months, which I do not believe it has been. But it's C-three because Tasty Treat is to the north, C-three and Precision Machinery Components is to the east, and it's a continuation of our C-two downtown area and going to C-three going down First Street, which I believe is why this, this non-conforming house probably got changed to C-three a long time ago. They're here asking for a zone change to R-three because I believe the person who owns it currently is trying to sell it and they want to sell it as a house, and not all banks want to particularly give a loan to a non-conforming use. And so that's the reasoning that the people gave to ask for this zone change tonight.
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions on that? This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to come forward to give more background on this can come do so now. Evening.
Mayor? City Councilman? Yes, I represent the property.
Could we have you sign in, please, before you start?
Okay. Hey, I represent Deborah Lich. She has been trying to sell this house, she's did quite a bit of work on it, foundation-wise, she has...
Can we get your name, ma'am, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm Lori Ortwick with ERA, I'm a real estate broker.
Thanks, Lori.
Sorry about that. She's did a quite a bit of work on it, it's scheduled for roof and siding as soon as the weather warms up. So she is asking, since she was unaware that it ever was C-three, she had been able to get a government loan on it when she bought it, I believe in two thousand and four. Whereas now, the lenders are strict and unless you have cash or can get just an in-house type financing, nobody can finance that house. So again, there's all R-three to the south, all R-three to the west of it. So she's asking that it be zoned R-three.
Lori, is the R-three to the south and the west directly adjoining, is it directly abuts the property?
Yeah, there's, I'm sorry, the west is all residential to the south, going down First Street and all of the area to the west, southwest is all R-three. Across after you get to Fleming, it's all R-one or R-three over there.
Okay. Questions for Lori? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comments can do so now. Seeing none, Beth, I'll ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on January seventeenth, twenty eighteen at the request of Deborah Alrich, Al, Alrich, I don't know how you say that, to consider a zoning change from C-three's commercial service district, service commercial district to R-three multiple family residential on property at one hundred West Park. The motion failed at the planning commission hearing on a four-to-four vote.
Okay, with that, I'll close the hearing and move to item number twenty-nine. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five-seventeen approving a zoning change from C-three to R-three on property addressed as one hundred West Park Avenue.
I'll make a motion for consideration ordinance number fifty-five-seventeen.
Second.
Okay, and Val, again, we just heard the planning commission report, it was a split vote, can you kind of give us a summary of some of the discussion at planning commission on this?
Yeah, I believe the planning commission was split a little bit because it is kind of a major thoroughfare coming into town, similar to like Omaha Avenue and Thirteenth Street, and slowly those houses aren't really fitting that major thoroughfare anymore. And so that was kind of, I think, the reasoning for maybe the people who voted against this because it is kind of a prime corner that could potentially turn into something commercial considering there's commercial to the north and a commercial across the First Street. The other four probably felt well since it is abutting residential to the other two sides. It could probably go either way a little bit, it depends on how much do you see First Street continuing down from Norfolk Avenue, continuing that commercial feel? Do you want to continue having small houses along that thoroughfare?
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions on that? Any questions on that? Okay. And Val, again, we just heard the planning commission report, it was a split vote, can you kind of give us a summary of some of the discussion at planning commission on this?
Yeah, I believe the planning commission was split a little bit because it is kind of a major thoroughfare coming into town, similar to like Omaha Avenue and Thirteenth Street, and slowly those houses aren't really fitting that major thoroughfare anymore. And so that was kind of, I think, the reasoning for maybe the people who voted against this because it is kind of a prime corner that could potentially turn into something commercial considering there's commercial to the north and a commercial across the First Street. The other four probably felt well since it is abutting residential to the other two sides. It could probably go either way a little bit, it depends on how much do you see First Street continuing down from Norfolk Avenue, continuing that commercial feel? Do you want to continue having small houses along that thoroughfare?
Okay, thanks, Val. Any questions on that?
Yeah, question, Val. What's minimum lot size on R-three?
Single family, I believe, five thousand square feet, fifty foot wide.
For R-three?
For R-three, let me check. Minimum lot fifty foot, five thousand square feet.
Okay, that was, one of my concerns is that it wasn't a big enough lot to be R-three, but...
It's probably close, I don't remember what size it is. It's forty-seven by one eighty-one, it meets the square footage, but it's a few feet shy of that fifty foot wide.
Okay. So by approving this, we're approving a non-conforming lot?
You're still kind of non-conforming a little bit, yeah.
Val, the existing comp plan has this particular parcel as C-three, is that correct?
The comp plan actually shows the whole kind of thing as residential just because it was a natural split to not add that little thing right there.
So this is really kind of a gray area?
Mm-hmm. So it's up to you all how you see that corridor go.
Any other questions, counsel, or discussion?
Can I say anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, here.
I just can't vote?
A few more minutes.
I thought I was just supposed to sit up here and look pretty all night. That's why I wore the suit coat.
I think that's the first jacket.
It could be the first jacket. I think in this situation, the market will correct itself. By zoning, by changing this to R-three, you really don't affect the area at all. It's whoever buys this property will put this property to their use as a commercial endeavor or possibly build, you know, or keep it as the home. The market will correct this on that street, so I don't think it's a real bad deal to go ahead and zone that to R-three, that'd be my, if I was voting tonight, that's how I'd probably go, so, anyway.
I agree with Shane, if somebody buys that for commercial, they can, they can change it back, so, you know, if we help it out with a house tonight, we can change it back if commercial buys it, so.
You look at like Thirteenth Street, the market corrects that, you know, as people are going down the street, they're buying them, they're tearing them down, they're putting commercial in as it progresses. You know, we may not have quite be there yet on First Street, so.
All right, any further discussion, counsel? I think those are all fair points, this is a gray area, it's not clear cut, cut and dry, and I think you do have market forces that play a significant role in the future of this corridor. So with that, if there's no further discussion or questions, I would ask for a short title, please.
An ordinance for the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Clause and abstaining, ordinance fifty-five-seventeen carries on First Street.
Your Honor, I'd move that we suspend the rules on this item and pass it on second and third as, again, as noted, it should correct itself whichever way it goes.
Second, ma'am. Okay, motion and second to suspend the rules. If there's more discussion on that, please vote.
All councilmembers present voting in the affirmative. Clause and abstaining, ordinance fifty-five-seventeen carries on second and third.
Okay, moves us to item number thirty. I will open this public hearing at the request of Booth Corporation to consider zoning change from I-one by the industrial district to RR Rural Residential District on property addressed as twenty-five-and-five Crown Road. And again, to kick this off, Val, will you give us some background here, please?
Yes, thank you. This is kind of a similar situation than what we just heard. This is out by Green Fiber and Off-Road Ranch and they have a trucking business right across the road from them. This property came into our jurisdiction here a couple years ago and what we do is whatever the county's... what we do is whatever the county zoning is, we have an equivalent zoning that it automatically comes in when it, our extraterritorial jurisdiction expands out. And so, when this came into our jurisdiction, Stanton County had this as industrial and so it came into our jurisdiction as I one. And so, there is quite a bit of I one coming down Highway twenty-four. Up closer and then down here in this corner also. And then, if you look at the Stanton County zoning also, it surrounds, they have industrial that continues to surround this area also. And so, like I said, it's a similar situation. It's an old farmhouse that one is wanting to try to buy. And we were told by them that the bank that they want to use out in Colorado does not particularly want to give a loan for a non-conforming house in I one zoning. And so, they're asking for RR.
Okay, thanks Val. Any questions on that? This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to make comment can do so now.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel, my name is Jim Booth, Booth Corp., and I'm here to talk about that. You want to sign in here?
Please.
When we bought this house back in two thousand twelve, it was in the Stanton County jurisdiction. They had their records that they were approving it for rebuilding if ever there was any damage to it. Our intent was to be buying it for a, for a family and have it be for a forever home for them. Basically, a twenty acre, a little less than twenty acre acreage. And it was going to be their home forever. They wanted to be able to just basically live on that and understand that it's, it's an old farmhouse, but it is very well kept up. Not just an old, small farmhouse. It's a nice, large, four bedroom house. A lot of outbuildings and stuff. What we're asking for is for it to be as it was with Stanton County. They gave us the indicator. It was on our appraisal. It was on their records as it could be rebuilt, even if it was that light industrial designation. So, now, two years ago, apparently, it is, the jurisdiction had changed because of kind of a blindside for us, the off-road ranch. Not only the noise and issues that came about with that, but also the intent now has changed for us that it cannot now be rebuilt. So, we're asking for a consideration of some sorts, I guess, the rural residential to be in a situation where they can, if ever it does, God forbid, be damaged. And so, we're asking for, for that to change at some point for them.
Is there a pending sale on the house right now?
Yes, uh-huh. Yep, they, we had bought it for them. They have lived in it. Become the whole family and lived it, and now they have the ability to get a loan, apparently. That's how it said, they cannot.
Any questions?
So, basically, what you're saying is through no fault of your own, your circumstances changed from the time you bought the property till today?
Yes, yeah. It's more specifically to because of, I guess, whatever happened two years ago, the off-road ranch, that had changed a lot of things out there and our intent had effectively changed.
Did the jurisdiction change?
Yes. Jurisdiction changed, yeah. Yep, which in, again, the intent from the Stanton County was, no, you can, we will give you permission to rebuild that has been lost.
But factual on it, the zoning never changed?
It didn't, no.
Because it was industrial and it's still industrial?
Indicators that I had looked up, did my investigation on it, was I've got the Stanton County assessor's sheets. It has account type as residential. It has property class residential, zoning agricultural. Apparently somewhere in there, it never indicated light industrial.
But what, it-
But it is.
It is.
Apparently, yeah, now that it has come up with the loan being shown again because they had it reappraised, it is now, or was still.
Was still then. Reason I ask, because of the amount of industrial that's in very close proximity to it.
Is around there. I think Mr. Clausen kind of poignantly put it, is that it would re-correct itself. Some more of my investigation of the the intent out there, I guess, is not to go that way with industrial anywhere. It's more, and you would understand more, I guess, that the comprehensive plan showed what you are looking for. It's maybe northwest, south, or I'm sorry, northeast, southwest, in a sense of maybe some building of what's going on here in Walmart. I haven't seen anything and from what I understand, there's no real plans to do anything out in that area.
The comp plan, Val, shows what in that area, or does it?
Our comp plan still shows this area as ag because it is on our, our boundaries. But the resident, or the industrial is coming down that corridor of twenty-four. It just, we don't necessarily want them skipping if possible.
We're not even asking for the whole twenty acres either. It is just there is a small portion of it where that house actually sits. If that helps in a sense of understanding that just that it can be rebuilt. Tornado, fire, anything like that, for the family to be able to still stay on there, grow and be there for-
Jim, we've heard instances passed where in the neighborhood there's been requests for off-road ranch to expand some of the things it does. Concerns, complaints from the neighbors of, in this instance, it's, that that is not a deciding factor in this family's desire to continue to live there and purchase the home, is that correct?
No.
Has that weighed into any of the-
Right, you could act, you can actually ask them because I believe they're talking with you, so you, they, you can get a better perspective from them who have lived there.
Any other questions for Jim?
I just, so when, when you were under Stanton County's jurisdiction, you were under the, I mean, the, you read off the zoning, but you're, the impression you had was there would be no held up for rebuild?
Yeah, and being in print also with the appraisal being on there.
So, that'd be, because when you purchased the property two years ago, that's probably something, or four years ago?
Twenty twelve.
Okay, okay. Gotcha. And then, when, when we had with the off-road ranch, when our, when we took the jurisdiction over, it just kind of encompassed your area and changed everything, kind of, gotcha, okay?
Intent and all changed.
Can I ask a question of Jim quick? Did you get anything from Elaine Bates? Because she responded back to me. Elaine is the zoning administrator for Stanton County, so she would be the one who would have written a letter saying, we are okay with you rebuilding that.
She indicated that she would do that if requested, would even talk to anybody, so that can happen if you needed that.
Because she could not find anywhere where she gave you that actual permission?
She backed that way.
Okay.
Yep, and I, and I talked with Jeff Blaser, who did the appraisal. And his indicator on the appraisal was that, yes, I talked with her, she indicated it, and that's all we go off of.
But she didn't give anything official in writing, okay. And she indicated to me too that that would essentially be null and void anyway once it went from her jurisdiction to, to our jurisdiction.
That's what changed with the change.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now.
I am Shane Bernhardt, morning, or evening. I live there. We've lived there since two thousand, when we bought the property. We might talk to Elaine Bates in Stanton County, yeah. We'll just get a couple maps here. Maybe it's a little easier to, you know, to have what we're looking at.
I have to give one to the media, please. Okay, I can.
You can share.
We can share, yeah.
Thank you.
I can put it up on the screen too. Two, okay.
It's a public.
Yeah, back there on that table.
The, when we bought the property, or bought it through Jim, here five years ago, it was Stanton County. The little part that we're trying to rezone is just the kind of the little box in the, towards the right side of the page, in the middle of the page. Yep, right there. There's nineteen point two five acres there. That's about three acres with the building site sets. The biggest problem with our, that we're having is with the, with the loan is if the building burns, you know, if the house is more than fifty percent loss, we cannot rebuild our house because it is, it is a non-conforming building. Now, the, the last page that I gave you is, is from Stanton County and there is a, I guess, a red underlined part there that says that the property was to be destroyed, that we could rebuild. We did talk to Elaine, oh, I think it was the same day as the zoning commission meeting that we had here. Went and talked to her and they, she said that if it's in Stanton County and the property does burn down and the property is destroyed, we want you to rebuild. If that is your wishes, that we would like that. We like the area. I mean, we were there, we've been there for five and a half years. The off-road ranch came in and it's, I mean, it, it's, it's part of the, you know, part of our area. The industrial, she told us the industrial, it's zoned industrial because of old Highway eight. When Green Fiber went, and she said that was done before she got there, and she said she was there in ninety, I believe. So, but with Stanton County, it wasn't an issue with rebuilding. I guess with the industrial zoning, I mean, everything else around is agricultural. We have Green Fiber down there. The last building Green Fiber put up was in two thousand six. So, and there hasn't been really any other advancement when it comes to the industry in that area. It seems like more the advancement for the industry in Norfolk is up north by New Core. You know, with Norfolk Iron and Metal, with the ethanol plant, you know, in that area. So, I guess our biggest thing is just getting the the building site rezoned. That way, we can go through with our loan.
So, out of that land, you only own the building site with three, roughly three acres?
No, we, we're, we're buying the whole property. The nine, there's nineteen point two five there. The only part that we really want to rezone is the house because the rest of it is just farm ground. Now, the other part of, you know, if you want to look at the advancement, the industry down there and the building down there, I mean, from about hundred and fifty feet south of my house, clear to the highway, old Highway eight, and that's only a flood plain. And it actually even over to Green Fiber, that's all flood plain. Where the original building for Green Fiber was built, there was just a little, little section there that wasn't. So, I guess if, yes, if a person was going to go down a building in that area, they're going to have to haul a lot of dirt. And I know, I think, when Off-Road Ranch came in, I think part of their problem or one of the issues they had was the sewage, I think, and how to get rid of that, and I think they put in tanks instead of putting up a lagoon. But I guess our biggest thing is just getting our, getting the house rezoned just so we can finish up our loan. I guess it's protecting an investment, really? If the house burns down in the next few years, where are we? You have an acreage with no house that you can't rebuild. That's what we're at.
Shane, on the map, the box represents that nineteen acre part, right?
Yep.
Okay.
The, well, the, the box is just, is just about three acres.
It's just a three acre.
That's just the house. That's all we're really trying to, to rezone. And I think on your, on your, yeah, on your map, it's, I think it's called the Wade addition. Chuck Wade lived there. It's been quite a few years ago. They, they sectioned the, the building site off from the rest of the property. I don't know why. I guess we never, we've asked that question, can't get an answer, but that's the only part that we're really looking to rezone. The farm ground could stay industrial. I mean, there's a lot of industrial farm ground in that area, you know, so.
And you, you have zone farm ground or ag land, just to the north of you.
What's that? Yeah, and there's agricultural and rural residential right to the north of us. It's not like we're in the middle of the industrial.
Other questions, Jane?
Not for Shane. I think I have a question for Val.
Shane, if we could have you sign in?
Yep.
Thank you.
My question's more because this seems very much so looks like spot zoning. By definition, it's one five acre parcel right in the middle of everything, ag and industrial. Would it not be better, or how does our zoning relate to this if we have twenty acres that is I one zoned as ag that has a house on it? Is that? Am I thinking the right direction here? I mean, I can understand trying to work with them, but putting a rural residential, five acres right in the middle of ag and industrial seems odd.
I think that's why the Planning Commission struggled a bit with that. This actually failed at Planning Commission on a two to six vote also because I think they were having the same questions that you're having since it's the property owner, the future property owner says, we're not in the middle of industrial. Well, you're kind of on the northern edge of industrial, but you're surrounded on three sides of it. And so, I think Planning Commission was struggling with that a little bit too, putting a rural residential five acre piece in the middle of what could potentially be industrial. I mean, yes, it's still being used as agriculture and state statute does not allow us to restrict that. I mean, whatever zoning it is, if it's, it's being used as farming and ag, it needs to continue that, but yeah, that's a hard question that you're going to be putting a rural residential right in the middle of I one.
Well, and that would be another point. You do have a pocket of rural residential not far to the north of what we're talking about here. I guess, just looking at it, to me, it's another one of those cases where it's not cut and dry. There's there's some gray area and the comp plan, existing comp plan has this as agriculture.
So, when when the, you know, basically, we, when Stanton County and we took over, what was that due to? Was that due to strictly, was that because of the in twenty twelve?
It must have been some extension and annexation of our city limits that then bumped out.
Was it directly related though with the racetrack?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, it was not. It was, that bump out came when we moved the city limits on out to pick up No, it was not. It was, that bump out came when we moved the city limits on out to pick up, um, if I, if my memory serves me right, when we, you know, where New Core Detail is at, we absorbed that on in and we moved. I believe, uh, the city limits extend right now to, uh, just across the, um, gulch line there. So it was, it was an extension of, and predominant, we've always done that. We've gone to quarter sections at the least, so.
One thing I'm.
It, it was not.
Yeah.
Part of.
The Off-Road Ranch.
Off-Road Ranch.
The only thing I'm looking at though is the city jurisdiction moved within the time of the purchase of property, you know, within their, you know, obviously it's the way they purchased the property with Booth Corp. And now be able to transfer a loan to themselves, kind of in a pickle because it moved within that timeframe. You know, but it moved, but prior to that, they'd been okay. Or if they would, if they would have purchased a home with the, in twenty twelve or whenever Booth Corp. bought that, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be here today. You see what I'm saying? They'd, their thirty year mortgage would have been continuing through. But now that they're purchasing from Booth, you know, buying through their own mortgage, the, so, you know, that you're off like six years in the wrong, you know what I'm saying? From, it's not exchanging hands. It's the same ownership. It's just that they got, they, the, our jurisdiction kind of landed smack dab right in the middle of their, you know, their mortgage. And now you're sitting there. So I, I look at this like as, it is a tricky deal because like Corey stated, it feels like spot zoning, but you've got a situation where they live in Stanton County. They don't really have any representation here. You know, we're the ones judging this situation in Madison County, in the city of Norfolk, in our jurisdictions. If they had Stanton County still in charge, there wouldn't be a problem here right now if it was still in their jurisdiction.
It's kind of like where he says we put, we're spot zoning, it's actually we drop light industrial on top of their rural residential.
No, we didn't.
Oh, not that.
They rezoned correctly. They rezoned I. They were, the only way that, that the house thing was being able to go forward was from their statement that, that they would let them rebuild, which from what I understand is not in writing other than this, um, residential appraisal report.
That is what Laleen said. She could not find a, a letter in writing, yes.
So, so that, that's, I mean, it was industrial when they moved in there on it. So.
In oh eight though, you know, really with bank regulations, this wouldn't have been a problem in oh eight. I mean, going back to oh eight when the housing market went south, bank regulations have changed so much drastically now that that's where you're seeing all these, that's why tonight before us, we're having some of these situations. Because they won't give you the, they won't give you the loan.
We are talking about a zoning designation that maybe doesn't fit to modern day realities? Is that really, would you look at that really now and look at the area surrounding it and consider it industrial? Or necessary to be purposed industrial still today? I don't know that you could make that argument.
Mayor, if I may make a comment on this, just an observation. We're looking at some other maps in this area. And I think probably the benefit of having some industrial zoning in this area is probably more related because you do have other uses there. Uh, sort of protect additional uses from coming into play here that could conflict with Off-Road Ranch and some of the other ones that you'd find in this area. But as far as new, in, I, I think we're just talking about two different questions. And, and as far as making it attractive for new industry, this, just to the south of this, um, is in the hundred year flood zone. So you can develop it, but it would be costly. You'd have to bring in Phil and things like that to raise that ground up. So it's possible. But I think the bigger question is, um, having that buffer from other uses that are already there today for industry to keep out new residential as opposed to looking at something that's existing. So I just want to throw that out there as a difference in the conversation as to what, what we're talking about here. Just, just a comment.
We are still in a hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Seeing none. Uh, that, I would ask for a planning commission report.
The public commission held a public hearing on January seventeenth, twenty eighteen at the request of Booth Corp. To consider zoning change from I-1 light industrial to rural res, RR rural residential on property at twenty-five oh five Crown Road. The motion failed at planning commission on a two to six vote.
Okay, that'll close the hearing and move to item number thirty-one, looking for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five eighteen approving a zoning change from I-1 to RR on property addressed as twenty-five oh five Crown Road.
Your honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-five eighteen.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion, counsel? Just for clarification for me, um, the zoning change request, Val applies to, um, the three acre parcel or the nineteen acre?
If you look at the, the red box that I have up, that's the nineteen and just that northwestern corner that's surrounded by trees, that's essentially what they're asking the RR to be, is just this corner up here.
The three acre.
Three to five, it's something like that, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Discussion, counsel? If not, I would ask for your vote. Your short title, I'm sorry.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
And please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance number fifty-five eighteen on first reading, council members Granquist, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Faust, File. Voting against the ordinance, council member Langy abstaining, Clausen. Ordinance fifty-five eighteen carries on first reading.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number five-five-one-eight on second and third.
Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Voting of suspending the rules and passing ordinance fifty-five eighteen on second and third reading, council members Granquist, Merrill, Muren, Jackson, Faust, File. Voting against the ordinance, councilman Langy abstaining, Clausen. Ordinance fifty-five eighteen carries on second and third.
Okay, that moves us into our regular agenda. Item number thirty-two, consideration of acceptance of resignation of councilman Shane Clausen as Ward Four representative. And, um, Shane, before I let you give your, um, browsing farewell speech that you so dressed up well for.
Thank you.
Um, I do want to say that, uh, um, I think we can all agree here that you have served as an exemplary, uh, councilman. I know I've appreciated, uh, the way in which you approach the job, always forward thinking, uh, creative, always looking to be fair to everyone involved. And there's not much more that you can ask for in a councilman. So it's a sad day for me. Sad to see you go, but, uh, um, I know that you'll continue to be involved in the growth of our community.
Thank you, mayor. That was nice. I don't know. I don't know what to say now. I took the wind out of myself. Maybe feel good about myself. No. Uh, I thought there'd be more people here tonight because of, no. No, we're honest, I, it's been a humbling experience. Um, I think anytime you're elected to something, you, people pick you from somewhere, you know, it's, it's just kind of humbling. And I've always felt that way about it. It was extremely humbling experience. And I'd just like to thank the people that voted for me in Ward Four almost, not quite, eight years ago, seven and a half years ago. Um, it's been quite an experience, uh, been an honor and a privilege, I would say, to be able to serve the community like this. Uh, there's a lot of things that come before us and, and obviously we've kind of passed judgment, you know, tonight with people's homes and lives and everything. And then, um, so it, it's, it's just, it's an honor to sit here. And I, I've got an opportunity to be up here with a lot of great people that really care about their community. Uh, we don't always see eye to eye, but everybody's opinion, uh, if, when you sit around and hear it, there's some really great opinions that come from everybody. And that's kind of how I always kind of made up my mind on things is I gotta, I take things from Jim and from this side, you know, you need to kind of, and then you can put your opinion together and how you're going to vote. And, um, one thing I always tried to do is try to be as practical as I could, uh, when I thought through things, just try to keep it practical because that's about all my mind can do, is keep it practical. But, uh, and that, and, um, just try to do what was best for Norfolk. Um, and so really what happened here was, because I've been asked, people have been asking me, what is going on? You resigned. Did you get in trouble? And I'm like, no, you're not getting in trouble. Uh, I purchased a home. You see how I, how long I slow-played this. I purchased the home over a year ago. And I, with my wife and my kids, we, it fit, it was just going to be something I fixed up and sold. But it ended up being something my, I'll, I'll never forget, my nine-year-old daughter went in those bedrooms. She's like, daddy, I gotta, this can be my own room. And I'm, and at that point in time, like, I'm done. I, we'll be moving here. So, so we fixed it up and we moved, we moved to a different ward, which is unfortunate. Uh, my mom's here tonight. Thanks for coming out, mom. But, uh, I grew up, she lives in Ward Four and I grew up in Ward Four. And, uh, so I've kind of always lived in that neighborhood. And it was a really tough, especially since, uh, there's only, you know, a few months left on my term. And so this, the, the whole reason behind this was me moving, that nothing more, nothing less. And it was just a better move and fit for my family. Um, I made the mistake of saying my growing family to the page when I made a statement. That's when I, and so my wife sees that on Facebook. She's at school and she's like, I told you, we talked about it. She said to meet our family's needs. And I was like, nobody's going to care if it's meet your family needs or growing family. She goes, I will get a question if I'm pregnant. And she's like, if I do, it's you, on you. And then all of a sudden she started getting texts and questions from some of our friends about, are you pregnant? Are you expecting? So we're growing up and our family's growing up, not out. I would say over the last seven years, it's been me growing out, but not her. So, uh, that's one thing you just never want to ask. So, so I just want to get that clarification out there so she doesn't get asked that anymore. But that was my, that was on me. I should have said my. Yeah, I gotta get that out there. But all in all, I, uh, you've got some great people up here, uh, serving our community. And, uh, it was an honor to sit up here with them for these last few years. I truly appreciate it. There's, and there's some, some great staff out here that really truly care about this community. And, and you don't really know that until you actually get an opportunity to go and sit on some of these subcommittees and hear what they have to say about things and the, the knowledge they have and the, um, it just kind of mind-blowing. Because you, you come in here and you think, well, I'm going to go change the world, you know, I'm going to get up here and, and I'll go in there and do this and that. And then you sit down and you start thinking, wow, from their perspective, they're doing things the way they can do it. Obviously, we like to push them in the direction we want them to go a little bit, but, um, there's some good people here. This is a good community. And, and I, I, I look forward to sitting back, kind of, uh, seeing things play out and how, and just continue to watch this community grow. So again, thanks for the opportunity and I guess I'll sign out.
So, um, there is discussion built in for this, um, in council. And then we vote on it. So I guess we don't necessarily have to prove your resignation, but, uh.
Brought my daughter with me.
Well, you know, um, Shane and I see eye to eye on a lot of things that come before the council. I'm not so sure that I can really support this. Or really want to, but I understand the reason for it. So I guess, I guess probably I'll have to vote in to affirm any of that.
I always thought the Ward Four people were in very good hands with, with Shane. And, and I think I mentioned him too. If, I, I would want him representing me. Uh, I think he does a really good job and I, he always looks out for the best of, of his people in the ward. So, um, I always thought that was, uh, very, very cool.
I want to thank you Shane for serving with me in Ward Four. Um, I know you and I had a lot of conversations, a lot of odd, different topics that went on. It was nice because you were able to be reached also with, from the citizens as much as I am. And that really, it makes it sense that we do this together on the Ward Four. And I hope the next councilman that we can do that too. So, thank you.
I didn't pay anybody to say these nice things. Maybe Rob, but just because he sits by me.
It has been a pleasure to work with, with Shane and all you guys because, uh, we have a strong council, I feel. And I think we're doing good things. So I hate to see him step down because I think that hurts us quite a bit. And we may be able to replace him, but I don't think we can replace him and everything he's brought to us. So I'm kind of sad to see him go. And, and I've been friends with the family forever and I've been proud to work with him. So I, I hope someday he can come back and do it again.
Right, Shane, it's kind of like attending your own funeral.
Yeah, I know.
Wow. We're black.
Fest has commenced. Um, but again, want to say thanks and thanks for the time commitment, uh, that you've made in, uh, doing this and investing, um, your time, which is, I know, um, in, uh, short supply, uh, to the betterment of the community. So, thanks again. And with that, if there's no further discussion, I would ask for your vote. Oh, we don't have a motion?
I was wondering.
With trepidation, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in second.
A planning commissioner?
With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in affirmative, motion carries.
And it moves us to item number thirty-three, consideration of approval to call a special city council meeting on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at twelve noon to fill the city council seat vacancy in Ward Four as a result of the resignation of Shane Clausen.
This will move you, honor.
Second.
Motion in second. And Shane's departure does create an opportunity for someone in, uh, Ward Four to step up and, um, take a leadership position. It's a great way, serving on the city council to directly engage in improving your community. So we're hopeful that we have a good deal of interest, uh, from the ward. I'll just mention some process things in terms of how this, um, the next few steps will go. To persons interested in filling the Ward Four council vacancy, obviously must be from Ward Four, living in Ward Four, which is the southeast quadrant of the city. Um, you must submit the following to the city administrator's office no later than four thirty PM on Monday, February twelfth, a written, written statement of intention to be considered and a personal resume. Um, and then at that point, after, uh, the twelfth, the mayor and council are entitled, are entitled to interview interested persons. And the process will culminate with a selection being made and, um, an appointment being, uh, formally approved at the special city council meeting on February fifteenth at twelve noon. So with that, any other discussion, counsel? Questions? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. It moves us to the last item, item on the agenda, item number thirty-four. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-five nineteen amending section twenty-six dash twelve to include provisions for abandoning a water service line and for maintaining a private water service line. And section twenty-six dash fifty-seven to include provisions for abandoning a sewer service line and for maintaining a private sewer, sewer service line of the city code and approval of affidavit for use in implementing these provisions. Okay, motion in second. And, uh, Steve, would you kick off the discussion on this for us, please?
Certainly, mayor and council, this is an amendment, um, an ordinance to amend sections twenty-six, twelve and twenty-six, fifty-seven of city code. Essentially what this is doing is adding language that in the event of a, of a, of a site demolition permit issued for premises, that the water and sewer services would be demoed up to the property lines. And at that point, they would still remain the responsibility of the owner until such time as they would be. As a function of doing that, we want to also record that that has been done, so there's an affidavit process to this, so that we can make a permanent record that would be, if somebody's going to purchase that property and they go through, through that process of the title search, that would show up that there's an abandonment there and as to where it was abandoned to, and they would know, "Am I going to have to, and what am I going to have to do when I purchase that property?" So, the language in here amends section twenty-six twelve for water service lines and section twenty-six fifty-seven to add the language necessary to document that and file an affidavit.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? Transparency measure here, Steve?
Transparency, yes.
Okay. If no questions or discussion on that, short title, please, that.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-six dash twelve of the official city code to include provisions for abandoning a water service line and for maintaining a private water service line, to amend section twenty-six dash fifty-seven to include provisions for abandoning a sewer service line and for maintaining a private service, sewer service line, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-five nineteen carries on second and third.
Okay, that concludes this meeting in the Norfolk City Council. Evening.